For days.
Hmm. Well, I might, I don't read my skin, just kind of deals with it, but man, they love me.
Yes.
They eat me a lot.
Our section.
Um.
You know, if you're trying to have.
Yeah.
Needs to enjoy.
We keep it in report out here.
We're not doing.
And then people are still getting assigned in or we have to let them in?
We're doing a new one either trying to do live now.
We're gonna, you do live. We're casting.
Are we, are we recording in just in case it does a part?
Well, we got our Zoom. We're doing both.
You mean YouTube?
We have Zoom that we're doing. Regular, right?
Correct.
So then we're doing YouTube.
Yeah.
We have two separate.
Oh, I see. Okay. It will do so.
YouTube is a, a task. Cause, cause if we don't ever try it, we won't know if it's gonna work or what we gotta work.
We'll be too nice.
Huh? No, because. The family.
Everybody.
What is it?
I do share.
Um, much.
That was just one of my.
Nothing, guys.
Okay.
Very tough. I have to call you in your address.
Well, it's funny, I don't know where my glasses are, I still haven't brought one.
It's some minor.
You know, yeah. These could get fifteen hundred dollars.
Uh huh.
You are the good. Besides with that. I'm like, for.
These chairs.
As long as these are your era.
There's plenty of art. We never did break that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're, they're popular.
Money much era.
Are they that?
I mean, on the map. It's four.
And that's a long time ago, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they're totally fair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, I didn't action.
No, I don't think we need an action item.
It's right around the corner.
But you'll let us know what it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. It's gonna be in his report.
Um.
But I believe it needs to be an action item.
From the speaker.
How are you?
Some are me happy. Man, yeah. Maybe we need to ask the school.
Oh, wow.
Use the school building and. Quit going down to the port.
Oh, maybe that's the next step, yeah.
Why not?
Why not? Go to the cafeteria or the gym, whatever. Yeah.
Maybe they can get their. Stuff together.
Yeah, they've changed everything, yeah.
So we have record breaking meeting, right?
A lot of some record breaking meetings. For each phase.
Yeah.
One item, I can't talk very well.
Yeah.
I'll write through it, so yeah.
That's gotta feel weird.
Every day.
It works pretty mad.
It's, it's all over, like, I can't blink.
Yeah.
I can't, I close my eye and I can still see, so I cover my eye at night.
Wow.
Uh, it, it. My lip, when I try and like take a bite of a sandwich, my lip gets in the way because it doesn't move. And then it gets stuck between my teeth and my cheek, I have to like dig it out, it, it's off it.
That's like.
You have to paint it back. Straws. So paint it, paint it now.
I just like going to the dentist every day.
Yeah. All right.
But I can see the girls, so you can get my phone.
But right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wrong call. Councilmember bump, you have some member happy.
Excuse.
Councilmember Keller.
Here.
Councilmember Seager.
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt.
Here.
And there was.
Additions or amendments to the agenda?
Yes, I have one, like, add an executive session, or O R S one nine two point six six zero two A. Employment of specific public officers, employees, and agents in under limited circumstances.
Do we need a motion for that?
Uh, to amend the agenda, yes.
Okay. To move. What happened? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right, we will be adding the executive sessions. Stating the O R S for the justification of. O R S one nine two point six six oh two A. All right, adoption of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, uh, removing the ratification of the bills. Because I do have a question, there is a check missing. Um, so, I, well, I am known to adopt the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the action minutes of July twelfth. Approval of the action minutes of July sixteen, twenty twenty five, approval of the O L C C application for N W event producers L C C. And a group O L C C application for Jenny Light L C C.
I'll start at that. Discussion. This one, I believe you said, um, July twelfth council, I'm sure you meant July thirteen.
I apologize.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Adoption of the consent agenda passes with seat removed. Appearances.
Oh, we want to go to C. Will that be rem, being moved to action items now?
Yes.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Appearances of interest and citizen to share on a variety of perspectives on issues facing our community.
Nobody.
Well, all right. Public hearings?
No public hearings tonight.
All right. Action items. Approve the I G A amendment with N C E V, my CAD, electrical system upgrade project.
I'll do my best to read through this without getting a little messy. Um, and in the email response to councillor Seager, we also that a more detailed update from, uh, city staff, vantage point, and the CAD will be coming into focus. So. Just so everybody can get their heads around that, I think also at some point it could work, so. Again, we can all see what's going on. This project has been a nightmare for today, so. Uh, in January twenty twenty one, the city of Cascade Locks was awarded two point four million dollar grant from the Federal Economic Development Administration to harden and upgrade our electrical system for develop, for development and natural disaster resilience. The city also entered a loan agreement with Business Oregon through the Special Works Fund Program for four hundred ninety seven thousand dollars and received an additional hundred and ten thousand from the port for a total budget of three million fifteen thousand. The main focus of the project was to acquire the Cascade Lock substation from Bonneville Power and upgrade it as well as get more power out to the industrial park. This project has been an issue from day one. B K I engineers, the city's engineers of record, assisted the city in developing the original plan and building the R F P to find an engineer and project administrator. B K I estimated the engineering and construction management portion would cost roughly three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The city received only one bid that came in at over one million dollars. The cost was not feasible. At the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two council meeting, council approved resolution one four eight three, allowing the city to directly contract with B K I as the engineering and project management perm. The link to the meeting packet is below. At this time, the port of Cascade Locks was looking to partner with a high energy user. Much of the design was focused on getting needed power out to the industrial park for the partner and possible other user, uh, other users. In this rendition, the port was going to provide an additional two million dollars for the project. In the summer fall of twenty twenty three, the port had a sea change in leadership and pivoted away from the desire to bring in high energy users as well as partnering on electrical upgrade project. In the same summer, the city entered into an intergovernmental agreement attached with Mid Columbia Economic Development District to oversee the grant and loan requirements. Staff did not have the bandwidth to properly oversee the grant and loan requirements. It is also went against our finance policy to not have the CAD administer the grant of that size. At this point, the city had to pivot to a new, more cost effective design. The engineer assigned to the city from B K I began a new design process. Unbeknownst to the city, at some point in the fall of twenty twenty three, the engineer assigned to the city began having health and performance issues that resulted in excessive delays. In July twenty twenty four, B K I was acquired by Vantage Point Solutions and added to the confusion and delays. We are assigned a new engineer in the summer of twenty twenty four, who have been working to get the project back on track. Since the start of the current presidential administration, many federal agencies have seen a reduction in staff, including E D A. This has delayed their progress in reviewing submittals from the city. In addition, the city has received conflicting information and confirmations from O D O on where power lines can be placed. This has forced the city to reroute from our desired path. Because of the never ending twists and turns, the original eighteen thousand budgeted in the I G A has been spent. McCad is requesting I G A be updated with a budget increase of ten thousand dollars to twenty eight thousand dollars. City Attorney Cleveland has reviewed and approved the I G A. The funds would be pulled from five one dash four five one dash six three nine four one. The electric department reserves for equipment upgrades. The grant does not cover administrative costs and will need to be paid out of state funds. Many member counsel like no more of this project, I'm happy to sit and meet with them. Counsel, options are approved, the I G A amended, approved, or not approved.
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement amendment with Mid Columbia Economic Development District.
Second row. Any discussion? Tiffany.
So I do have some questions. So this is an increase of twenty thousand dollars.
Ten thousand.
Cause, um. The one in section, in section two of the I G A, it says, uh, fourteen thousand and then the section, and then a little bit down further in. Uh. Number three, the pull up point there, it says twenty eight thousand, so that's two different ten thousand dollars. Am I misunderstanding that?
It, it's, it threw me off first time I read it as well. Uh, so that one section, four thousand for project management is going from four to fourteen, and that's the only increase. So the total is going from eighteen to twenty.
Okay, and then that's for me. Okay, so that's all, that's all that those totaled up.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't asked that same question again.
Okay. Okay, so it's just the ten thousand.
Correct, yeah.
Done it. Yeah. Any other? But um.
Yeah, so. I am very much supportive of this I G A. It beats. As someone who had to work through a C D B G grant, when we did the fire protection project, McCad was absolutely invaluable. They were so on the money on, you know, all the regulations that we had to follow, the ship though, the labor, uh, there, there, there's, uh, uh, their labor pay, we have to pay at a working scale or whatever, you know, all. The bowling laws.
Okay.
It's very complex to do these federal grants. They were brilliant and they got us through there without any issues, you know, we, I mean, we was absolutely critical to have that citizen, so. I, I think this is a smart, you know, uh, engage on behalf of the city. My only question is, you know, how comfortable are the ten thousand enough? I mean, from what I understand, we have a lot of this project to do. We haven't really done anything, right? Have we acquired the substation?
We have, yes.
Okay.
We've acquired, we've had it for about a year now.
Okay.
Yes.
So we've done some things. I guess that goes to my, I put in a request to the, the mayor of the, it sounds like we've got, now we're having to put an item on the, on the office.
There's something I've been wanting to do, so yeah, this discussion is kind of just started.
Okay.
Yeah, it came up in August.
Oh, we got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you know that one?
The second one, the twenty.
Twelfth, twenty fifth.
Bit, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I'm very interested to kind of see the entire, uh, project budget. All the moving pieces, like I said, graphically, I want to see how this is in our city, which infrastructure pyramid and Cascade Lock Substation, and how this kind of, uh, works together.
Yep.
And then, and then, you know, if I get a visual, what underground, what lives we were trying to underground in that piece as well.
Yeah.
Um, then, like I said, I feel like I can do a much better job of oversight in these types of, this type of project. And make sure that, um, you know, we're being, we're doing our due diligence. Uh, I've got a few other things I'm just trying to do these. Um. So. You know, this, the port had anticipated contributing a, a, a big chunk of money because they thought they had a, a high value user, it sounds like.
Correct, yeah.
You know, what we know in today's economy, A I and, you know, and servers and this type of technology, it's only growing in demand.
Correct.
The fact they didn't, they didn't, they couldn't land that one then. I would say there's a high chance that we could have an, 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 a new initiative sometime in our future.
Yeah.
So how does the? I almost feel like the port should reconsider supporting a project like this. Because I, I just, I don't know, I don't think it's hard to see. This could possibly happen at a later point in the future.
Definitely.
And so have we talked it, how they? What is their vibe on, you know, anticipating, you know, future development and thus being ready with the infrastructure? I guess that's what this was about at the time, right?
Yes.
Correct. But.
This is, this is what I was saying, if I can buy in real, and that was the whole purpose of going this direction was because of anticipated growth in the industrial park and then voila, was that we're not doing, we're not, they're not doing.
Well, I don't want to speak for the port, but the direction this new leadership is going is completely focused on tourism, recreation, and leisure hospitality. That's what they're going after. Unless there's another sea change or somebody comes in, there's an opportunity. In the, the, I don't remember exactly what it's called, but the I G A between the city and the port that will work together to promote economic development, it talks about. In, in the future, we updated it, that if there is any high energy user that wants to use over ten megawatts of power, they will have to build their own substation. We're gonna require them to build it because we just don't have our own capacity without the bigger forty megawatt one we were gonna get. So.
Okay.
Well, what, what did it all about?
Yeah, I'll, I'll set that aside, okay?
Yes.
So, um. Okay. And for what it's worth, that clip, I, 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 I posted in the, my questions. That came from a previous, um, minutes in staff report. And it was just a random search that I bumped into, it's totally fortuitous. But, um, is it safe to say that our new scope reflects, this still reflects this, what I posted in there?
If I remember, yes. I mean, it's got, it's got two points, two resiliency for our system. Instead of one substation, we now two that back each other up and doubling our power capacity with half of it dedicated to the port. The industrial park.
Okay. Um. Okay, that's all got, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or anything?
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Yay.
All right, the, from the I G A amendment with McCad, the electrical system upgrade project has passed, no names. All right, now we're gonna go to ratification of the bills in the amount of six hundred and sixty five thousand, three hundred and seventy four dollars and eighty two cents. I'm known to, uh, ratify the bills in the amount of six hundred and sixty six thousand, three hundred and seventy four dollars and eighty two cents. I'll start at that.
Yeah, all right. Any discussion, Tiffany? Okay, so I, I do, I, I did ask this question, but, um, it wasn't answered, um. Just on page seven of the first set of bills, and I appreciate, um, please don't think I'm like going after anybody, but there is a check, there is a check missing. Uh, in the manual, in the manual checks.
Can you say what's checked or?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
Okay.
Um, at the bottom of page six, the last. Hold on, let me show you where, no, there is, at the bottom of page six, the last manual check written is, uh, six oh nine two zero two seven, and then the first check at the top of page seven is, uh, six zero nine two zero two nine, so somewhere not six zero nine two zero two eight, please. Listen.
Okay, so what I tried to explain, probably not good in writing, is a manual check in our accounting system is we put in the vendor, we can give it any number we want. It's electronic payment, it's not a physical check. So what I think happened is this, the person who entered those lost track of the numbers, and this is not the normal number system we used anyway, but I just think she lost track of the numbers. It really doesn't matter, she could have put, they wouldn't even have to be in sequence, she could have put any number she wanted. It's not a physical check. It's an electronic payment. This just records it in our accounting system.
Okay.
Does that better explain it?
It does better explain it, um, it, I, in the future, can it be sequential so that it can be kept track of? I mean, easier, I mean.
Well, normals, the normal number system, which has been, the way it has been for a really long time, is we put the date of the check run. So if the check run was seven fifteen, it'd be zero seven one five two five zero one. The first manual check, we, here's gonna be zero one, the second one, same date, zero two.
Right.
So that, so that we know these happened in this same check run and they aren't numbered sequentially.
Okay, so you're just thinking she lost.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Cause there's no, there's no, uh, two zero two eight.
No, and then, and it can't be anything because if, if she puts something in. Let's see, how do I say? There's not a check missing. So if she would have put something in there, it would have had to have been given a number.
Right.
Yeah.
And it could have been any number. She just missed that number.
So do, does, does the human put the number or does the system put the number?
No, we put them in.
Yeah. Human.
Okay.
That way you can track your payments and.
Yeah.
That would serve up her.
Okay, that, um, I think that was my only, only question, and I appreciate the pre, uh, explanation of the two big items.
Yep.
And that's.
Make sure, thank you.
And, um, are we still keeping, um, I know if you don't have your person here, but are we keeping a running tab of the one contractor that we were surprised was over a hundred thousand dollars?
Um, I haven't, but I easily can, yeah.
Yeah, because I would just be curious to know, because I mean, I see like two or three different more payments in here for.
Yeah, because you have to do, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
No. Okay. Do the ratification of the bills in the amount of six hundred and sixty five thousand, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pose, say aye. All right, so ratification of the bills in the amount of six hundred and sixty five thousand, three hundred and seventy four dollars and eighty two cents has passed, no names. Moving onward and upward to reports and presentations. Many reports.
New reports signed.
All right, audit update.
All right, um, so the audit for fiscal year twenty twenty three is underway with Aldrich and Associates. Audit samples were supplied to the auders, auditors, and fieldwork has been completed. The fieldwork raised more questions from F Y twenty two twenty three finances. Currently Finance Director Clark is feeling questions and requests from some, for supporting documents for Aldrich to hopefully have a report issued by the end of August. Because of poor record keeping and challenges with the E O P system, some data are either unavailable, incomplete, incorrect, or difficult and twisted. Finance Director Clark and I are working with the auditors to provide as much clarity as possible as we get clarity ourselves. For these challenges, Finance Director Clark is devising additional policies and procedures and better use of CASL to heavily reduce or eliminate these in the future, along with any findings, if any, by the auders. Process, documentation, and data storage will need improvements to prevent this level audit difficulties in the future. One of the major challenges that has impeding getting clean quality data from, from CASL is that appears the budget for the year was not uploaded to CASL. This along with poor, poor documentation, inconsistent processes, changes in personnel, with some things appearing to have fallen through the cracks and no true solid ownership over the financial process during that period is making it extremely difficult to find data. Some data are just not available at all, the ones that Aldrich are okay with staff updating now are getting updated with whatever data we can find. The good news is that we are making corrections now, implementing changes. We'll aim to get a F Y twenty three twenty four completed by the end of the calendar year and F Y twenty four twenty five completed by the end of the fiscal year and get back on a timely audit schedule. Attached are the audit tracker, um, and a little more detail from, uh, Finance Director Clark, it was on your desk. Um, kind of a, uh, expanding on those items that are unavailable, incomplete, incorrect, difficult, twisted, perfect. Uh, so a little more detail on those. Um, the biggest item right now, um, other than the budget not being updated, is the single audit for the wastewater project, is getting those files combined.
Any other questions?
Just, um, so is Shantay coming in to help with this? Or she's still being removed?
She's still remote for the most part.
Go ahead, say it.
So. I mentioned this at the last meeting, I actually called the administrator today to talk a little about it, but as someone who is, uh, you know, uh, feels this should, if this is our council, top priority, it's a city top priority, I'm getting these audits, uh, you know, current. Uh, I'm not comfortable with a proposed completion date of T B A. So what I, I'm not sure if council is in agreement, what I told the C administrator, I said, look, you should sit down with the auditor and your staff and as a group, you guys say, okay, assuming we get a start date of nine one, and let's just make that assumption for now. What is it gonna take to get the twenty three, twenty four audit completed? Uh, given that start date and given what you've experienced so far.
Yeah.
And then put a line in the sand. And, you know, the harsh reality is, when you have dates, it puts pressure on the team who's trying to meet those dates. If there's no date, that doesn't feel like a lot of pressure, like, well, it gets done when it's done. My, from my seat, that's not acceptable. It gets done, I guess, we need a date and we should try everything in our power to hold us accountable that day. And I mentioned, if that means coming in on some weekends and working, then by gosh, then that, we should be here. We, we've got to get this thing done in as short amount as possible, properly. And I'm not comfortable with a T B A as a proposed completion day, so that's my request, the, the staff. I don't know if council supports that, but that's where I'm at.
Tiffany. And I think, and to add to that, I think it requires all staff. The here.
Yes.
Doing this, instead of putting it on three people's shoulders, uh, I just, I, it's, this is just really very frustrating because we're gonna be hiring somebody else to take the position of the one person and, uh, it's gonna take how many, how, how long to get them up to speed? I mean, I, I'm, I'm just not okay with the person who should be in charge of this not being in the office.
I agree, I'm not, I'm not for either Shantay needs to be in the office to work them.
Yeah. I mean, that must be the process, I would think.
Mm hmm. You.
Well.
Have to talk in a general way. Yeah, because it's a sensitive subject.
True.
Right. Well, I, I. If I could. The, the, the use of staff, you know, it's, it's the city administrators, uh, prerogative and responsibility to use those staff as efficiently and as productively as possible. And, uh, right now, he's using some of the staff in a, in a remote configuration. And, you know, um, we can, I, you know, I, there's lots of opinions on whether that's the, the, the way to squeeze the most productivity out of. We can, I, you know, I, there's lots of opinions on whether that's the, the, the way to squeeze the most productivity out of, out of these, these, these staff. Uh, I'm open to a conversation that uh maybe changes the uh. The uh, the expectations among staff who come to City Hall. Uh, during the week, so.
I do check, the audits are very important to me, and this is one that I campaigned really hard on. I've been the one that's been asking for thing, other things to happen and stuff. And I've met with Shante and the city administrator over this, and I think you have too, Bernard. Um, I think we have a real issue here, but I think it needs to be. We need to do it in a different setting to decide what we want. What isn't the council wants, I mean, because I also see the workload that is given to. Other employees or people that don't have the option to work remote. And there, there's a lot of work going on, we're short. We have a problem. We have a problem. And it's our job to make sure that the city. Is running in pro- properly, and if it's, we're not paying attention, I want it, maybe it's on us, so. I don't think this is the setting to.
No, I, yeah, I agree, not, not the same, I, I am working on a report to address these issues.
You have anything?
No, I just had a cough.
You'll be sending out a report in?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I'm working on it, might be a couple days before I wrap it up, but.
Mayor. Yes. Can I ask the council, do you, are you guys supportive of requiring an actual proposed completion date in twenty-three, twenty-four audit? Are you guys supportive of requiring the city administrator to actually come up with a date? In which, in your setting is?
I totally agree with that and stuff, but that date really at this point has been one of my arguments. Really, if we just keep moving it along. I mean, we were gonna have two audits done this year and only be one behind in January, and that's not how it's looking. Go ahead, Tiffany, we have said dates. We sent one for five thirty, we sent one for, sat one for six twenty-seven, now we have one set for eight twenty-two. I mean, we have said days and we have, we have. Blown right over them. So, I mean.
So, we can get a date in there.
But that.
That's my runway.
You guys are okay with that?
You know, I would argue even scratching out those. On this staff and this city. It doesn't feel good to scrap the dates, you know, the whole audit team should, you know, uh. They, they're gonna, you know, recoil when they see the, us missing these deadlines. So that's the intention. I think any organization who runs a project, who have a program, you have dates. And you do everything you can to hold yourself accountable to dates, and you don't have dates. It's just, it's, there's no, it's, you're just asking to, to not adhere to any kind of structure, Tom. That's my, that's my management experience. That I think is worthy of consideration for this with stock.
It's always good to have goals, everybody's in agreement that we can get a date in there.
Sure.
You can get us a date.
Thank you.
Alright, City Administrator Bernard, report.
Alright, not too much on this go around, um, I A four closure preparedness meeting. The Rowena fire in January caused closure of I A four and massive traffic jams on I A four in Hood River and Cascade Locks. Traffic jam was to a, sorry, traffic jam was to the point where emergency vehicles struggled to get access and arrive at locations. The county emergency management department has organized a meeting for local leaders to discuss the issues. And prevent them happening again, the meeting is tentatively scheduled for August eleventh. I'm not sure exactly what Cascade Locks role will be in this, but we're part of the county, so we're part of the discussion.
Alright, I add to this, um, this weekend, I was, or Wednesday, Thursday. I was trying to get across the bridge and it was backed up. And one of the wildland fire trucks went through parking lots to advance. And I'm, I mean. I was concerned for safety of pedestrians and, and stuff, and. So I would like to add that too, is like, we can't be using the parking lots as the go around to get to an emergency, so.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. You said this was Thursday afternoon or?
Thursday about three.
This was a Cascade Locks brush engine?
Yes, I can add even more details off camera.
I, I wasn't here Thursday because my head was a fire, that's right.
And will you follow up, let us know for sure when that's coming up?
Uh, USDA tours, representatives from USDA will be onsite Friday, August first to tour our water and wastewater facilities. Myself, Mayor Wood and Utility Tech Rutherford will guide the tour and show off the facilities and thank them for their funding. A national night out, national night out is set for August fifth at Marine Park. Representation from the city, uh, administration, fire, E M S department and county law enforcement will be present. There's been additional conversation about providing food um for the community at this event. The port is willing to partner with the city um on funding for that um. Project, the port is asking the city to pitch in fifteen hundred dollars from our community support fund. I know this is a last minute request, what I wanna get, it's one of the few budget lines that, yes, it's under my. Authority, but it is council program support funding, so I wanna get councils. Uh, graces before I commit any funding.
It, so is the port providing fifteen hundred?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And they're also.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they're, they might pay for it and then ask for reimbursement of it. So I think they're running it and they'll just ask for our half when they're done. So, I support that.
Tiffany, we just, we only have like two thousand in the.
No, there's ten now, yeah, yeah, we put it back to ten, that's it.
Eric.
Is this replacing the community picnic?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Uh, Mayor. How is this replacing the community picnic?
Well, we're not doing one. And that's sure.
I understand we're not doing it, but this doesn't replace it.
I know, I guess not replacing it, I mean, it's, we essentially has.
Separate, this is uh fire department, national night out has nothing to do with community picnic, I understand what you're saying. We're not having the community picnic, so, but it doesn't mean all the community can, is coming to this, cause that's not how it's advertised.
We want all the community, it's national night out, so it's talking about safety and all of that.
It's not. Well, in my mind, it's not replacing.
I, I think at least some people saw the community picnic and national night out as almost competing events, like which one should get top billing? Or which one should get the funding from the port, from the county, from the city on promoting these things. And it was kind of a consensus of, of at least staff leadership to focus on national night out, not the community picnic.
Good. But, okay, I guess I'm a little confused. Captain Bumper, are you saying that the community is not invited to?
I didn't say that. It's, I didn't say that they aren't invited, I don't know how many people show up at national night out in the community. But when you advertise a community picnic, they all show up.
Okay.
But this is not advertised as a community picnic, it's national night out.
Alright, but it should be advertised.
Community, national night out.
For national night, is, is that what, is that what?
Correct, until it's for. This has been very last minute this year, if we keep this pattern, next year we can start several months in advance. Where it is the national night out slash community picnic, but the focus is national night out.
So. Ms. Woodsley, do we have something on Facebook or, or social media?
Fire department does, yeah, fire department has been posting it.
Can we print some flyers and post it to post on?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Maybe, can we get a couple of extra that would maybe hand out?
Yeah, um.
Political or?
No, I haven't posted that, no, I can look and see that, I don't know, we can get it out, cause it's for the community. National night out and all that, so. Go ahead. But this kind of originally started as a fire, E M S, police thing, so I mean, it's kind of.
That's what it is.
Their thing, it's not really, I mean, I understand that it's for the community, but I understand what Mary Ann's saying, it's not the community.
The fire and E M S and.
Police.
Police, do this, that's for people to come out and.
Get to know.
Get to know them. I, I think you're combining the two and it shouldn't be combined, I agree, the community can come. But it's not the city's. Picnic, it's fire, E M S and police. So, you go from there.
Bernard, we're gonna move on.
Other cities I've worked for, national night out was like a neighborhood type gathering. It wasn't limited to police and, and fire interest, it was, it was created for neighbors to get together. And enjoy the neighborhood, so, we're too small to do like five different separate, so we're all going to one. Big cascade lock there, that's my understanding of that, right now. So, just for what it's for, I'm not, I'm not against a separate community picnic. If we wanna do both, I'm all, I'm for both, I love community. But for this event, I would like to promote it community wise, so we get a nice showing and. We all get together as neighbors, that's my.
Especially where our prime and things are, I mean, we need to be hyper vigilant in our town and. It doesn't necessarily communicate with your neighbors and stuff.
Good for that.
You know, it's like you can see who your neighbors are and see who is your fire, maybe the kids will, maybe Smokey Bear will be there, whatever, you know. Uh, Tiffany, so Mary Ann, wasn't that community, wasn't that like a pop-up, wasn't that? Okay, so, that, oh, that's old timers.
That's the old timers, cause the, the community picnic took over.
Go ahead, Eric.
I, 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 I struggle because I feel like I'm the only one with kids here, and. If this is August fifth, and then we're trying to do a community, I mean, in future years, trying to do a community picnic prior to. Like, the school and school events, and now you're asking me, I already attended a community. Event on Saturday, I'm attending this one in next week. And, and it, it gets piled into this incredibly busy time as we're. Changing and going back to school and having to deal with all of those behaviors as well. It's not just as simple for families to go to five different community events.
And this way, if we provide food and stuff, we can offer the community, you know, a dinner.
Which I think is awesome.
And food brings a lot of people, especially these days, you know, there could be people that are around in our community. So.
Again, I, I support the fifteen hundred dollar allocation for this event.
Eric's good, are you good with it, Mary Ann?
Um, and I'm good with it, Chris, you're not? The approval, thank you.
Alright.
We're good?
Yeah.
Mayor and city council, Thomas. How about Marionita?
I just have a question, and I'm sorry, Jordan, I didn't get to it till today, but. When did we start using Casel to process payroll and our staff is not doing it?
Uh, meeting in July was the first.
And how much does it cost us?
Uh, total per year is sixteen thousand.
And I'm sorry, we're paying the finance officer a hundred thousand dollars and she can't come in and do it? I have a problem with this, that's my, that's my thing.
Alright, Eric.
Um, I believe in one of the reports that came out was a city hall survey. Um, to discuss funding and stuff, and I was, I have apprehensions about including finance on it. At this point in time with us asking for more money in November, I'm concerned of the, the optics of. We gotta pay for this and we gotta pay for this, and I want the one thing to pay for the E M S, and then we can deal with this. At a separate point in time.
That makes sense, I mean, I can easily update that. Survey just towards about what kind of functionality we want at City Hall.
Did everybody see the survey form? That he came, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Sorry, yeah, I, I can, I can just put down the one question, what do you want City Hall to offer? Library, post office, food bank, what do you want at Cascade Lock City Hall?
What are your expectations?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, outside of the normal city functions, what else would you like to see?
Eric.
Are you done on that?
Thank you. Uh, Tiffany. Okay, I have a few things, um, are we gonna discuss the city administrator raise? And when does that take, when does that discussion take place? Jordan.
Raise?
Yes, cause uh usually it comes before the council, we. Decide how much to give you, and you said in the budget process that if the council was willing, I have included a raise. In the budget, so that seems to me like there's going to be some sort of discussion or raise, or are you not giving, getting a raise?
No, it was in the budget, I mean, I.
But you said in the budget message that it would be if the council so choose. Chose to give you a raise, and last year you had a discussion and the council had negotiated. Uh, a specific amount and then they re, they upped that amount. For your raise, so does that mean that from, that, that's the last discussion we have on giving a raise?
That was the last discussion, yes, so thi- this one was part of the um cola and brice. For all staff.
Okay, you said, you said cola and brace in the budget.
Yes, there was a small addition in there, and I, I guess a misinterpretation, I didn't hear anything back from council about not. Receiving that raise.
Uh, that, my anticipation was that you would bring it before council and we would have that discussion.
Gotcha.
So, I don't know, how anybody else. Uh, with. The finance officer doing remote, it would be nice to get a weekly report on what's being done because. I, I don't think we have a clear picture of what's happening, because, and. Maybe there's some mistrust because we don't see the person in the office. And it would be nice to know what work is being done outside of the office, so maybe just a, you know, a brief tiny little report at the end of the week. Nothing extravagant like yours, but you know, just something that. We can be updated on what is being done by um the finance officer, and I'm sorry if that's the wrong name. I need a, I need an uh. A, a list of what the names have changed to, cause I can't, I can't keep up with what changed it, um, and. Uh, also, you know, it'd be really nice to be able to wear a jacket. That has the Cascade Locks logo on it, to have, have a little, a light jacket that we could, that we ourselves can pay for. But it would be nice to be able to go to a store that has setup that we could just, if we so choose to get a polo or a t-shirt. Or a jacket that has our, there's like nowhere in town to get a logo that we can, you know, proudly wear our city name. On our lapel, is that, I mean, is that a possibility, I mean, I'm advertising as everything.
I don't, we've been discussed before several times actually in my whole thirty years here. And especially when it comes to council and even employees, it's been discussed that. You know, you wearing it outside of city functions and you're doing whatever. It may not be a good reflection of, on the city, so. These discussions have happened over and over and over and over again, and the decision has always been, let's not do that. And same with, you know, guys downstairs, they have been told before in the past, don't wear your city work shirts if they say city of Cascade Locks. They used to, I don't, I think now they might say that, don't be wearing those outside of work. It's just, I don't know, it has just been something that's been said forever.
Mr. Bernard, what do other towns do?
So, it's not uncommon for especially bigger towns to have. Uh, attire that has logos and that, those kinds of thing, jackets is less common. But colored shirts and, and t-shirts, yes, but, you know.
And I can understand.
This really point, I think is well taken. You, you have your city logo shirt, you go to a bar, maybe after you drink, and. The next thing you know, it's, it's not a good look for the city, so, um. That doesn't mean that we can't be responsible adults and only wear it if we're going to, you know, be in good standing, you know. Uh, so I'm not opposed to it, but we just need to police ourselves and make sure that we. You know, we we make the city look right, you know, um. So is it a top priority for me, to be honest with you, it's not, I I I think we have bigger fish to fry. Uh, in my opinion, I I would, I think it put it on our to-do list, but it should be a lower priority in my.
So are we talking about attire that staff wears or general merchandise?
Well, I'd like to know more what.
So councillor, I would like to be able to tout my my city, and I mean, I'd like to be able to wear something that says Cascade Locks on it with our little fish. Logo fish.
So you're you're talking about just having attire for staff and council to wear, not to sell to the general public?
No, I'm not.
No, I I missed the perspective of your statement.
We should have entrepreneurs and that, I mean, I that was a complaint that I did hear this week that you you were like, there's only, I mean, I think. Um.
Don't really brush it to her.
Oh, do they have, do they have?
They used to, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if they do now anywhere, but I mean, there's just really not much that merchandise says Cascade Locks. At all in clothing and I think Bridgeside used to have.
Oh, Bridgeside used to, but I don't know if they do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put it on our big wish lists. Can't like, if a councillor wanted to get something, could they get the logo to do, I mean, this this isn't trademarked or anything, is it, I mean?
Uh, you could probably pull it offline, yeah, I don't. I don't know, it's trademark.
I can't, couldn't even use a letter, the logo for. Community garage sales days, so I do not think you can do that.
Well, it was the Cascade Locks function. That's why you could visit.
Yeah, but I don't know about. Just being able to, anybody going on there and getting it either, right?
No, you shouldn't do that.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, but but you, she's a represent, she's an elected official in this city. If she wants to have some attire that shows her pride for Cascade Locks.
Do you guys have a website?
Who's that store?
Yeah, we know it, yeah, we can do it, it's easy.
Okay.
So then they have a store, right? Yeah, I don't remember, there's so many herders that go through.
Sorry, I mean, I'm not trying to dig up more work or anything, I mean, but it would just be nice to, I mean, represent, just wearing a fleece jacket with something on it. You know, in the ver whatever. And then I will say that, of course, I did put the uh the EMS proposal online and there's, if you haven't read. The thread, you should read it because we have a challenge ahead of us and I just, it's. This, I just reposted what the city had and I've been asking and answering questions as people have been presenting them to me. Did you have some there?
Yeah, me, sorry, thank you for bringing that up, um. I wanna ask questions about the legalities of a locals exemption. And whether that violates privileges and immunities.
I don't know. Yeah.
I thought the river ran into that issue.
Yes, they do.
And that's illegal to do locals exemption.
Oh, it's illegal, you know what you're saying?
Yes.
And that's what I was told with my head on business, cuz I wanted to do a local discount, so if you're how ID it's a Cascade Lots. And I was told no. But I don't know, I've never really looked much further than that.
I'm gonna ask Ruben.
Yeah. Yeah, so easy to question. Have we turned that in yet?
Uh, no, not yet.
Are you like kinda kinda wait till the last minute to make sure?
We did a public notice.
Yeah, the deadline for the, I think it was Thursday, Thursday at five. The deadline for any um. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking for, but I don't think it has to be five until like the fifteenth, sorry, so can can it be? I mean, I don't know if we wanna have a discussion on it, I I I'm. Be just one quick discussion before we completely turn it in and commit to it, I don't know what is.
I can't have it changed after public notice?
No, that's true.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
That's true.
Okay.
Okay, it is what it is.
I guess, Eric.
Like, listening to people in the community, it's gonna be a huge PR campaign. I it's it's gonna be incredibly difficult and in a fight to say, do you want EMS or not?
Yes.
And if you do, how do you wish to pay for?
Exactly.
And so.
You wanna pay for all of it or some of it?
Yeah. Exactly, I mean, it's like even to the point of that one of the gentleman I was talking with was like, maybe that's our guard sign. Is make tourists pay for EMS or have tourists pay for our EMSers, I didn't mean that, like, that's the discussion that I was having with this guy.
Agreed, man.
You got it.
Yeah.
No, thank you, Eric.
And what, and what, you know, and then I I had a discussion with Jordan and we did have. Um, I and he and he reminded me about when we had this discussion in March, if you go back and you look in that packet, it talks about that. Uh, the the eco northwest.
Yeah.
Um, uh, cell phone tracking stating that ninety percent of the. Restaurant visitors are out of city. Rest or visit, you know, are participants, so you know, if you take the numbers. You'll divide it down and it really basically only comes out to twenty four dollars a person, so I mean. If you take the ten percent, ten percent of a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars and divide that by the number of residents we have, that works out to be about twenty four dollars. Person, so. I mean, the information's out there, we just, just gotta pick the good message.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Okay, Mayor, so a few things, I was picking up literally a day. And saw the Wasco Street sign down, I'm not sure if it got hit.
No.
Again, but it's uh the one on, you know, the corner of Wasco and Wannapaw. Um, I got a picture of that one, I, so show them, take a look at that.
Yeah, send it over.
Okay, um. And then I second uh Councilmember Keller's comments on. Numbers regarding the City Hall commitment.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
I s- I support the idea of like, what services should be co-located there, I think that's a good community conversation. And if they like the idea of post office and library and somebody gather services. That's the way we can split these costs and save some money, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, that could help us a lot, reduce the burden that the city has to take on uh by ourselves. And you know, the reality is, if you get. Your cement guys and 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 your excavators out there digging a little more to include the post office, some of the facilities. Doesn't cost that much, but you just add another person to help pay, you know? So I really hope we have a robust conversation and we've got lots of potential services. Forest service could have an office, I can think of lots of.
Okay, county, several counties.
Yeah, I mean, there's all these different entities, we could all be together. And then we dramatically reduce the burden that we're asking our our citizens and the general fund to take on, so I. I welcome that, but I don't wanna talk like, yeah, it's way too early.
Yeah, especially.
Yeah, um, regarding the salary for the city administrator, so. My understanding is you have a contract, right?
Correct.
Okay, and the contract should say something to the effect on what your salary is in the first year and say. Do you recall?
I don't.
Alright, to me, that should be the guiding document on what your salary looks like from year to year. And then if council has to take an action to adjust it on an annual basis, then we do that, but. That would be my request is that we just review what your your contract says, we just follow that. Um, okay. Let's see. And I ran into uh. A citizen at the coffee shop and he says, how come the uh? The Cascade Locks Tourism Committee, those information cards all spread around the town? And I'm like, I don't know, I mean, do you, if they, if if we, do we have them in a box somewhere and they haven't been passed out, you know what the status of those are?
Information cards?
They uh, they are put out by people that pay for. So like tourism has rats, seventy.
Right, exactly.
We have seventy rats and so we pay for this group. Of rats, so there's seventy different places and I think one of them's right here, City Hall.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure where the.
But are they distributed as far as you know?
The, I think.
Are like the brochures?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And we print it in the the latest.
Oh, yeah.
Hmm, yeah, they're all over up and down the gorge.
Or or are you talking about, they used to do a weekly or a monthly little?
No, no, I'm talking about the the fit.
The one that says Cascade Lock.
The map like card. And you said a map on it, it's.
Yeah, it's the tourism one, you know, like, yeah, there's one out front there, I think.
Okay, alright.
What you're talking about, yeah, they're they're distributed, yeah, there's like you said, seventy plus locations up and down the gorge.
Okay.
We were at dinner the other day and on our table was um like a map, there was a. A large eleven by fourteen, maybe a eight and a half by fourteen, something and it, I don't, my kid was wondering where it came from, I didn't know.
Hmm, was it here?
And it was, it wasn't here, I mean, we didn't eat dinner here, but it in Cascade Locks. I don't know, somebody was.
And they talked about like a hiking trail and stuff like that.
And the difficulties and stuff of the trail.
Oh, it had like numbers, one through sixteen or something and like. Points of interest and businesses were.
What I think you got torn off about, that's exactly what I'm thinking of.
He's gonna go grab it, I think it's the tourism one and it said, if it's the same one, it says the difficulty of the trail, that'll you know before you go out there like. It's.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is that what you saw at dinner?
It was, it was like torn off, like uh, like.
Yeah.
That's a good, like this side of it looks like, but front.
Yeah.
That's nice, yeah.
And then it has the numbers.
Right.
Then it talks about the trails.
Okay.
This is a nice one, I don't know if you guys can pass it around, I think they just got some, I mean, it was one of our bills, was the brochure.
I saw that too, alright, okay, continuing on. So congratulations on the Small Cities Grant for roads, and that's for roads, right?
Correct.
Two hundred forty three thousand dollars, amazing, so bravo on you and the staff for pulling that off. Can you tell me what the timeline is on that grant, you know, by chance?
I don't know.
Alright.
We we're worried it, they're working on uh the scope of work, so they'll be reaching out to finalize the scope of work.
Okay, and are we gonna have a conversation on? You know, two hundred forty, that sounds like a lot, when it comes to road constructions, that can eat up fast.
Oh, yes.
So is council gonna have a conversation on where our priority is, on which road?
So the the application uh specified Somerset, Wheeler. Regulator, venture.
River Review.
Oh, River View and Venture, yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, okay, but we have enough money to do all those roads, I would surprise.
According to our engineer, yes.
Alright, good.
Yes.
Alright. Okay, well then.
But I think that's also gonna be part of the scope of work, working with ODOT to make sure, yes, it is gonna, we're not gonna overrun our budget, so yeah.
Alright, and then, let's see. Okay, so regarding City Hall replacement, it's a broader question. I understand we were gonna try to do a contract for a facility needs assessment, is that still the game plan? Um, you talk about that in the past and?
Yes, so that was part of it, I did put in a request to this legislature this year and, you know, didn't really pursue it too hard. The focus was more on the concrete bridge, um, but that would kind of be. You know, trying to get to for the state to cover it, but the other part is I did talk about a full-blown survey. Statistically valid survey, where we would hire a company to come in, build the survey, they'd send it out to everybody, you know, hopefully get four or five hundred responses. And we can use that to really use the data as what the city wants, what it can afford. And use that to actually build City Hall instead of our our ad hoc survey.
Okay, well, I mean, for what it's worth. In Gresham, we were having some facility challenges and.
Yeah.
We hired a consultant to do a facilities needs assessment for like Public Works. You know, um, planning, we had a couple of different departments that we wanted to do analysis. And it wasn't that expensive, I mean, I wanna say it was like twenty five grand, that's that's for a big city, you've got like. A five hundred staff, you know? So I I am very much a proponent of us hiring a consultant to do a needs assessment, so. When we, when we do this project, we have a clear understanding of what we need now, but also what we need in the future. They're gonna have to reject out and say, you should see this much growth and staffing and blah, blah, blah. And uh if you build a building like that, you can grow into it and you don't have to rebuild another one, you know, ten years later, fifteen years later. You you've got a hundred year building, that's basically what we'd like to do.
Yeah.
But there's complexity to that, you know, and um, uh. I I think that that would be money well spent, so once you have that, you literally can take an architect and go, okay. Uh, this is the needs that we've outlined from this, the uh, from the 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 service requirements of this city. Design us a city hall that includes, again, hopefully a couple other entities, the post office, blah, blah, blah. And 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 build us a a a uh, a facility that'll accommodate that, that's modern and efficient and does all those things, it's. Has an awesome sound system, you know, for our meetings and uh is energy tight, you know? Just uh use as little energy as possible, but still be high functioning, so. That that's my, I guess I just wanna open that conversation up that, I feel like that's a valid. Avenue for the city to be kicking around as we're trying to get our arms around the City Hall project.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Alright, that's all I have, thank you.
Alright, thanks Bernard. Alright. I wanted to um. Say thanks to the port for their continued support, um, they they opened up the pavilion for Coolin Center. Which was nice, um, and then they did a grant for the radios for our, it was a the fire chief's.
The command vehicle, yeah.
Yeah, they put radios in there, which was nice, and then the National Night Out, but they were willing to let us have the park and. Willing to uh put some food out there and stuff, so I wanted to say thanks to the port for that. Um, and then also I wanted to mention about the grant from the Small City allotment, the two hundred forty three thousand for them streets. And my understanding is on that that this project will probably start happening until the spring and next year, so. When people hear about it, if they're wondering when their road will be fixed, you guys kinda have an idea, it probably will not happen till the spring.
But we'll give plenty of.
Yeah, yeah. So and then I attended the museum meeting and the collection has transferred. Um. And that was uh good information, the museum, they are, they um. Did the pony party and all that, Janice was saying that that was uh turned out really well. Um, and then um, the one point six million dollar uh loan forgiven. That we've been lobbying for and all that, I don't know how many of you guys wrote your emails from Trey, but we have till August eleventh. So I'm hoping that she signs or don't sign, but um that would be nice to get that loan forgiven for the community. Um, and then um I met with, I did a Zoom meeting uh with Nate from the governor's office. It was the Regional Solutions Team and it was nice to attend the meeting, except I felt like I'm just a little. Lot sight, so I'm not in tune to what's going on, so I'd like to be. Um, invited more often to the table of them kind of things, so I know what's going on in our town, cuz I learned so much. Um, and there's so much we don't know as a council, so I think it's a good place for us to be is in the meetings, um. Um. Cuz you, I just heard so many things and uh just so council knows that me and. Uh, City Administrator Bennett had talked about the office hours at City Hall going back to Monday through Friday. And nothing's gonna happen right now cuz they're short-staffed and all that, so it can't happen. But maybe once staff and stuff, we can look at going back to five days a week, but not pulling the three days off from the employees. Because I think that's a big uh thing for the employees to have three days off, I remember when I was in the work and they. Having, working four tens and having them three days off was so nice, so I think. When it comes to that time, that there could be a rotation of staff or whatever, whenever we're staff properly or whatever. Um, Jordan had said that he hadn't heard any citizens come here complaining about it not being open on Fridays. And I just told him that usually citizens will see us in the streets or whoever and or Kathy or Jordan or whatever. Well, they're not telling them, but they'll say something to us and I've heard it enough from the citizens that they would like City Hall to be open on Fridays, so. Um, so hopefully we can work on that, and then we received any applications for the council position now?
We've gotten two so far.
Two so far, okay, alright, alright.
It's open through Monday.
Open through Monday, okay, alright. Alright, I think that's all I have. What about ordinance enforcement, have we? Leaving.
I haven't gotten zero applications for that one, but, you know, the last council you were asked, if you would look at the previous one. We did, yes, and we we reached out to the.
I didn't reach out, I sent you an email.
You did or didn't?
I did send you an email, you probably haven't heard that, I think it's sent to you on Thursday.
Okay. Oh, I went quite after everything, so yeah.
Alright, so I will, um moving into in and out of an executive session, so recess this grammar session.
What, what you have to say?
Yeah, yeah, you wanna, someone's gonna make a motion, I make a motion to go into executive session, ORS one nine two one six six zero two eight. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Alright, has been approved to go into executive session, ORS one nine two six six zero two eight.
And can I just ask one question, the councillor killer, did you second that?
Yes.
Yeah, he did.
So I want to.
We're gonna pause the recording. And then mute and turn off the camera.
And then because we are trying YouTube live out for the first time, he is gonna verify that it is.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we need to adjourn. All in favor. We have this back.
Yeah.
Yes, please give me your executive session documents back.
I wrote on it, so you're excited to have it be mine.
Yes.
Yes. Take notes, I wrote on it.
Thank you. Yep, right there. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.